Okay, we will start, we are going to audio record today. So we have trustee Alfonzo, trustee Cozaro, and myself from the board. We would like to get finished by 10 o'clock because we do have the theme signing at the new rec center. So we'll get, jump right into it. Whoever would like to speak first?
Me, please. Hey Joe O'War, 300 East Maple, a number of things I wanted to talk to you about. Before consideration of the great crossing separation, there's no light, so I'm not going to bother with this. Before making kind of consideration on the great crossing, you know, separation project, I wanted to bring to your attention that I belong to the Dupage Rail Safety Council. We have monthly meetings and there's a lot of input from regulators and, you know, officials, government officials, and industry advocates. So one of the things that they mentioned, which I was very happy to hear, is that the IDOT, who does the funding for all these projects, or it's a combination of IDOT and ICC. There's a new, called, there's a new program called Plan 130. And the, it's a 95 slash 5% funding split. And there's no government, there's no local government ask in that program. So we, previously, we had to put some skin in the game. We had to put some money into design and, you know, project preparation. That's off, that's taken out. So if you can find someone to get the 5%, that would be huge. And so I know that's an ongoing thing. However, as part of that Plan 130 project, I was bringing, I pulled up some of the data and they have a crossing ranking for the entire area, including other counties outside of our area. And the closest we come on ranking as far as usage on these great crossings is the Addison Road Crossing. We're number 60 in Addison Road. Ardmore Avenue is 82.
What does that ranking mean?
The ranking about how many vehicles use the crossing statewide or however.
Not danger, it's just traffic.
Well, yes, I can give you the program. You can get a look at it. It goes on pretty much detail.
Just do your notes.
So the, the problem is, is that even the data that they're using is from 2018. And I brought that up at the stakeholders meeting when they presented the feasibility study, that they were using data from 2018. So you're using out the data to make the determination. 2018 was before they had these super long trains that have to go less than 10 miles an hour before they clear the switch at the east of York Road leaving the freight yard. Going in, coming out. They have to do 10. So you got a two mile long train, he's all the way down past Addison Road and his hind end is still coming out of the yard. They have a counter that can measure the length of the train, so he knows when he can start accelerating. But meanwhile, he's poking along at five because the railroad officials are out there with radar guns checking sure these guys aren't speeding. So I identified a company, they're called Croy Railway Group. I'm going to send you guys next week the link. They have a technology to do real time determining crossing data. And what they do is that they set up their monitors and they contract with local governments to provide real time information to first responders. So that they can provide that information. So first responders will know, don't go to that crossing, it's blocked. And it may, it'll be blocked for a certain amount of time. The technology, I talked to one of their board members and they said that technology is available to give you studies over a length of time of how much usage a crossing gets. So I'm going to send you guys the link to the Croy Railway Group. If they have a, they're right now working with Almerc, right now working with Barrington on their projects. And you can take a look at them before you, the feasibility study recommendations are made to the board on which crossing, on which project we should do. Perhaps you might want to look into this group. Because whether you use it for separation project or not, you're still going to have better information for our first responders. We had, the other day on Villa Avenue, there was a fire truck blocked. He came the wrong way going southbound. And he waited, properly waited for the lights to stop blasting, the gates to close, and then he could get around all the stop traffic. But that stop traffic had been there for a while because there was a long line of cars. So a second thing I wanted to talk to you about.
Just second, Joe, that Plan 130, is that through ICC, the Illinois?
Yes, IDOT.
Oh, IDOT.
Just go to state of Illinois website, that in the search engine, and it'll direct you. And it's really, you know, I sent Matt something on it, I don't know if he got it. And so we'll see, you know, if they identify, if that project is even a tech when you guys put your application in for funding. You know, you might want to take another look at it. You might have put it in in a previous program, your application may have to be resubmitted. So that's way above my pay grade, so. The second thing is, in the same relation to this, our great separation project, it was brought up at the meeting that right now, because of staffing issues, IDOT is down 1,000 engineers statewide. And the railroads, when they were having tough times during COVID, to slash, you know, to better their bottom line, they slashed their governmental affairs staff. So if you had trouble getting through to Tom Everett-Everson, who's our governmental affairs person, he might not even be there anymore. He's still listed on the website, but they don't, how often do they upgrade your website? I mean, he might have a larger area. So when this project comes, is identified, you're really going to have to, it's going to be a heavy lift to get the design and the implementation, you know. Another thing they brought up was that the feds had a $25 million grant on the table for trespasser protection along railways. They withdrew the funding because there weren't enough applicants for it. And that totally affects us because we don't have a full-time grant writer. Reason we get the projects we got going on right now is because Parks and Rec has a grant. Why don't we bring that Parks and Rec grant writer to work for the entire village? And we're leaving money on the table if that person is only specifically looking at Parks and Rec projects. So that's something that we should take a look at. The, the project that's at the train station, that's temporarily suspended, I noticed that on Beverly, on the east side of the street, where they put the new parking lot in, they didn't extend the sidewalk alongside. That has an issue. It just walks, to where the housing, the existing housing is, the sidewalk is there. They tore it out when they did put in the new parking lot. The parking lot's done, they never put the sidewalk back in. So we'd like to know if that could be looked into.
Yeah, that's part of that whole redevelopment. He's supposed to, he's supposed to take care of that and we've discussed that, that apron area, taking care of that. I don't know when that will be done. It depends on.
Okay, so the other thing I have is, I emailed all you guys last week and all the available commission chairs and staff that coordinates with our commissions about upgrading our system to provide Zoom access to all our commission meetings, to all the meetings like this, so that people don't have to be in person to attend. It would help people who are hearing impaired, who might be able to list their captions activated on their screen so they can understand what's going on. It'll allow trustees and village staff to be able to tune into commission meetings. Because the audio, the audio just doesn't work for everybody, okay? So I have to deal with City of Wheaton because they have the, they have that setup. They did it in-house. The city clerk in, I think her name is Andrea Rosedale. I talked to her, I sent you her contact information. She will be very happy to talk to you folks about the ordinances that need to be put in to make it legal, you know, with Open Meetings Act and everything else.
Yeah. See, that, that is actually against the Illinois Open Meetings Act. There is a bill right now, and I don't remember if it's a state bill, a senate bill, or a house bill. It was originally brought up to allow Zoom access, right. Be, once COVID was here, the only time you could do Zoom access is if there's an emergency declared by the governor. Since that emergency's been done, Zoom, you cannot do Zoom meetings.
Yeah.
The bill was originally submitted to allow for Zoom meetings. There was a lot of negativity from, like I say, I don't remember if it was the senate or the house. There is another rewrite of that to allow commissions, non, you know, binding to allow Zoom, which is, it's on the, I believe it's coming up on the floor. There was like a thousand bills that were submitted about two weeks ago. That may have a chance, you know, so the, so the commissions, you know, could have Zoom access. But, you know, as far as like the board or anything, that, that probably will not be allowed.
Well, I get what you're saying, but it's already, I mean, they've already figured it out. It's the county seat, you know, so there's a lot of people that don't, don't really.
Yeah, from what I've heard, that, that's really against the old May.
Yeah, I didn't have enough copies at the last meeting, but I did bring extra copies of their agenda. If you guys need any, anybody need any?
Yeah, sure.
It's how their agenda reads when they do the setup. And anybody else wants to take one either. Because it does increase participation in fact. Here's a picture with a copy of the emails that I sent you about this contact information for Andrea Rosedale. And they actually had commissioners that were out of town that were able to sit in the meeting and participate. You had members of the public who weren't there that were able to sit in and participate. And increasing participation to help guide the village in the decisions they need to make. That is what we're all about. So anybody who wants one of these, take a look at it, have a look. And in the long run, I'm going to end up going to our commission meetings and making presentations to them and seeing what they think they can advocate for. Because it's not they that decide how it's made to work. We're asking you guys to decide how it can be made to work and implement it. And otherwise, I'm sure everybody else has got something to say. Thanks for your time.
Thanks, Joe.
So my understanding of that statute is that the trustees who come in on Zoom are basically treated like public comment and they can't make decisions. Like if you're on Zoom, you can't vote on something per se. And that the Zoom, how they have it set up in Wheaton is more to view the meeting. And then they allow public comment on it, which is pretty benign, like there's no vote on it. So that's my understanding of how they kind of skirt the Illinois law.
Right. And just from.
I think it's a great idea.
With the RSC, we, we do have the moderator who can regulate content. We provide the Zoom access, he can regulate what people say, you know, as far as time limits. And who can, you know, speak in which order, so there's no people talking over each other. They can view people remotely, you know, so.
Okay.
It is worth looking into in my opinion. Thanks.
Good. Thanks, Joe. Okay. What's next?
Joe Neely, 521 South Monterey Avenue, on a brand new street. Thank you. We had, we started separation and repaved the whole nine yards. And we have a whole bunch of brand new trees, especially on the east side of Monterey to Washington Heights. This year we have a pending cicada emergence. And they're generally not harmful to trees except for young newly planted trees. We're wondering if the village is actually going to try to do anything to protect their trees out of the park. Looking at what the algorithm suggests, they suggest like a netting around them that's gathered at the base. But I don't know if the village actually has plans to do that because I'd hate to see all those brand new trees die the next year.
Yeah. We'll check on that. Yeah, I don't, I don't know if they've, they've got any plans like that. Yeah, because, yeah, they don't eat the leaves. They dig into the bar, yeah, they lay their eggs, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right, we'll look into that.
And the algorithm has some good information about how to deal with it.
Steve?
Steve Delarosa, 300 South Summit. I just want to say that I watched the village board meeting on Monday and I was pleased as punch to see all the public comment that occurred at the meeting. Because there were, what, an hour and a half worth of people coming up to speak on public issue. And that's a wonderful thing for our village. It's a wonderful thing that people in our area actively got involved and engaged. And I just want to commend our village members for doing it. That's it.
Okay, thanks, Joe. There's Steve.
Kathy Neely, 521 South Monterey, and I just wanted to say thanks to the board and especially the Public Works Department for getting our street done. And especially the sidewalks, it's so much safer to walk on the two blocks that have been redone.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, we had a lot of good comments about that project. Contractors did a great job. They were real helpful with the residents there.
A lot of bugs in the road, so to speak, along the way, but we got it done.
It was great to talk to them and actually get, you know, we could go out and talk to the resident engineer, Sarah, and, you know, if we had an issue with the driveway or something, like, oh, we'll, we'll take care of that thing.
Yeah. Good, good to hear.
They were really good.
Okay. I guess I'm just here, we're here to talk about what we talked about on Monday at the meeting. About for the resolution, this is my resolution. I guess I don't really know how it all works, but I just wanted to work with you guys on it and get the details of that kind of straightened up so that we can get it on the agenda in a way that you guys like and that we like as well. So we were kind of hoping that you guys can just kind of lead us on how to navigate it. Or if you had any questions. Oh, yeah.
It will be on the agenda as a new business item, so it'll be up for discussion. There won't be a vote on a resolution on, on their next board meeting, but it'll be up for discussion. The board may or may not give direction to open a resolution on it. But there will be discussion.
Okay, so can we have any of that discussion today, just to kind of at least get it started, get the ball rolling?
Well, it'll be, it'll be for discussion, you know, so before, you know, for the comments on agenda items, people can come and speak and then during the board discussion, you know, people will take into account the comments that people have brought up. And we can discuss it here today if you want, but it would be on the March 11th meeting.
Right, yeah. I just wanted to at least get it started, just so that, I know a lot of people have different opinions on it and we can get it started and then we're not, you know, doing all of that discussion at that time. If that's okay with you guys.
Yes, that's why we're here, to open it up. I mean, I don't know.
So 10 o'clock, President Cozona had mentioned that there's a signing over at the new construction project. A thought that I had, because this is a public meeting, if after this coffee with the board and all the other comments are kind of addressed, I would be willing to stay for as long as it takes and sit in the boardroom over there and we can, you know, just kind of have a bit of a dialogue and kind of go through some different thoughts and comments. Anybody who wants to stay and just kind of workshop that a little bit, I'd be glad to do that.
Yeah, we can do that. We did email you guys all a resolution that we are suggesting. And we, like a good start, maybe a good starting point to have a discussion on that and make changes to that as you guys see fit. But we feel that is a good starting point anyway. We can workshop that.
Okay. Okay, good, thank you.
I also find it very helpful when you send it, send all of that information to the entire board. Because then I know that I, I feel like I'm prepared when we come to have that discussion. So I know that there are people who are sending us different articles, different references, and that is very helpful as well.
Do you want me to resend it to you? I sent it.
No, I haven't. I have that, but that is, that has been very helpful, so thank you for that.
Okay. What else? Mr. Malthus.
Yeah. Have we, have we put in place a new TIF on St. Charles Road, TIF 7, I think it is?
Yes, yeah, it was voted on at the last meeting.
Right, okay. And some parts of TIF 5 were taken up away, put into there.
Correct.
So right now is, with moving some money from TIF 5, and I think there was another TIF 4, does any money come along with that move for that portion into the new TIF?
No, I believe, because we closed the TIF and I believe we have to refund that.
But there was, there probably was money in TIF 5, possibly. I don't know.
Yeah, I thought, it's my understanding that we have to refund that to the taxing bodies.
Go back to the taxing bodies.
Yeah, once it's closed.
Moved over with it.
No, I don't think so.
So there's no money in the St. Charles Road TIF?
Correct.
Is there any plan, like if somebody comes in to say, hey, I want to do something to my property, either some major renovations, which would be TIF eligible, but there's no money in there? Is there any way to come up with some money to help those people make those improvements? Is there, you know, like, can the TIF borrow money against future TIF revenues? Because if there's no money, there nothing's going to happen for a long time.
Yeah, I don't know that. I don't know how, because like one, like Oval Team, when that started, and that was before I was here, before on the board, I don't know how they, if they bonded, if they bonded the money? Because I know on the North Avenue TIF, they bonded money, because that's why the, the North Avenue TIF is underwater. So.
The Oval Team, they did bond it and it was guaranteed with future TIF money.
Right.
Is that possible in my.
That's probably the way that would have to do until it starts generating money.
So my reading of the TIF statute, and it's just my reading, is you can bond it, but you can also, the village can basically forward money in advance of future revenues for the TIF. So that there is a way to basically jumpstart the TIF prior to waiting on the bucket to start filling up. So there is some mechanisms towards that.
I don't think the village has any money that they could put person, you know, itself into the community development. It would have to be against future revenues. I don't know about the possibility of banks going, going for that. If they're lending money, a $500,000 project, really not 100% sure how that money's going to come in.
I think it's a great question. And why don't we just get some clarification from that, from Attorney Wolf and from McLaughlin, and see what can be done? Because if you watch that meeting, I addressed some things about different programs and that that I'd like to see as part of the TIF.
Well, that's what made me think about it, how you're going to fund those programs.
So let's get some good clarity on that.
Yeah, because if you don't have some money in the bucket for people to use, it's going to languish there for five, 10 years.
So I thought that the village, you're saying the banks, but I thought the village itself could advance funds.
Well, the village has to get the money from somewhere. You know, the budget's very close, you know, we want to keep our budgets low as can be so we don't get raised taxes or anything, you know. I don't see how the village is going to come up with the cash. They have to come from an outside source.
Yeah, and that's, like I say, that's what, that's what got North Avenue in trouble. It's from that beginning when they, you know, they bought that land, they bonded it, and then we're still paying that off.
Could you clarify then, so in, I'm sorry, on TIF number three, which is the Southville Park? So TIF number two was what, or TIF number one was the Northville Park, which was Target?
I'd, yeah, I think TIF one was Target.
TIF number three was the Southville Park, which basically was bounded by Addison Road and Villa, or Ardmore. And you say that one's underwater. Well, that TIF is now 10 years old. You've been collecting a bunch of money. Where'd the money go?
To pay, what, first off, the, the EAV went down. They, they, from my understanding, they opened the TIF and then 2008, I don't know, were you then? Al, it was like 2008?
I just looked it up. It's 2014 is when it started.
The North, no, the North Avenue TIF?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's why I said it's TIF number three, which is the North Avenue, which is again that southern, south of, south of North Avenue, bounded by those two areas, which includes the old junkyard. Where'd the money go? I mean, you've been collecting money for 10 years.
Is there any money there now? Have you checked?
I have no idea. It's not, like I said, it's still, I don't know. Like I said, I was just sort of curious.
Well, we don't know if there's any money there now. It's safe. Where'd the money go?
That's a good point. That's a good point.
Maybe it was there.
Well, there you go. And let's, let's, I went over to the metals warehouse last week and that place looks like a war zone.
Which one?
That, that boundary area that you boundaried over there, the roads. If you just go on the aerial photograph here, you looked at the roads just like, I mean, you don't, you don't need to have, you don't need to send Mick over there to figure out that things are really looking pretty crappy. Look at the aerial photograph. It's pretty crappy.
What, what area?
That's the area that is bounded then by Ardmore, North Avenue, and Addison Road. That's that small industrial area.
That's, that's not in the TIF.
That's TIF number three. Yeah, that's TIF number three. In fact, the TIF actually goes down the stone road across the railroad tracks. Well, the only reason I brought it up was because you're talking about talking to the people here. And I'm just sort of curious because we see that they, nobody's updated the, the financials on that TIF since 2019, so.
That's one of the things that I brought up on Monday's meeting, that I wanted to see at least twice a year that there be a financial report on every TIF that we have in the village. And that would include a balance sheet, letting us know what's in reserve, what's come in, what's come out. And that's something that we've been absolutely lacking. You can't even, it's so hard to even find that on the website. I wanted that to be part and parcel of this new TIF, but to cover all the TIFs.
Well, the thing was on that TIF, 2014, they have this very detailed PDF of all the things they were going to do on that. And in those days, whoever was community development or economic development obviously spent a lot of effort getting that down there. And it's abundantly clear after 10 years, nothing's been done.
No. Well, they bought the, the one parcel, actually the two parcels where community development went in and then where the gun ranges now.
So that TIF goes then all the way over there to Ardmore?
Yeah.
Or to Villa?
Goes to Villa, because that was part of the TIF. And then, because we bought that land where the RV place was, where the gun shop is now. And then property values dropped, so that EAV, I think, is just now getting to the point where it's starting to generate money on its own. And then when we sold, when we sold the property and when we sold community development building, that went into the TIF, but that's still paying off the bonds that they took.
How many pieces of property has Villa Park bought over the, over the last 10?
Over the last 10 years? Not a lot. Seven, or nine years now. The only thing we bought was AK mulch in that time.
We bought a house property too.
Yeah.
Didn't we buy Junkyard? The Junkyard on South Road on, or that TIF you're talking about, the old?
On North Avenue, where the gas station, where Casey's is? No, they bought that. The gas station bought that. The original, whoever the original, it was, they got bought out by.
It was Buc-E's.
Buc-E's, yeah.
Buc-E's initially owned it and then it went to Casey's.
And that's what the lay, that's what the, part of what they, the lay was, getting that thing built.
So I think there is a lot of confusion with TIF 3 because as I'm pulling up the joint review board, which is the last one that's put to the website from January 10th of 2022, it says that this TIF started in 2006.
Yeah, see, that's, that's what I thought. I thought it was early because.
In 2008 it buckled up.
Right, in 2008, 2009, when all the values dropped. That's what I thought.
And they spent a lot of money because there was a lot of water. And they spent a lot of money because there were some water issues at the corner of Addison Road and North Avenue. Uh, it's flooded all the time, but we have addressed that to make that property marketable. And then there was some uh, infrastructure problems down at the, at the townhouses down on the west end that had to be addressed too.
Yeah, that lift station, the, the, which lift station went out of place.
So, so that's where some of the money went, but I don't know about any money sitting around.
That also seems to be the last time that we have a fiscal year status, this twenty twenty, on the website in any way that I see.
So in regards to trustee Kozar's suggestion to get uh, more uh, timely reporting on the status of TIFs. Um, so I know you suggested that at the last meeting, but in terms of implementing that suggestion for the village, how is that gonna move forward? Has, has the board decided that yes, that's something the board tends to do, or is that still up for discussion?
No, that's not that staff is gonna start doing, um, but especially posting that on the, the website, that's one of the things is I've had discussions with the manager about getting more stuff on their website, because it is outdated. A lot of the information is, you know, the, the site itself's been updated, but a lot of the information on there hasn't been.
And even if you get information on the TIFs on the website, that information's gonna be a little stale.
Yeah.
Because it takes a while uh, for those numbers to come from the, from the county, so they're gonna be uh, not.
Yeah, they're probably, yeah, probably like a year, but yeah.
So they could be six months to a year behind.
My thought on it, what I had made it was to give staff the benefit of a couple of meetings or so, to kind of look into some of the ideas that I brought forward, and then come back to us and tell us how they're gonna implement that in terms of twice a year having a review, different programs that can be posted that, you know, are set programs that if you're in a TIF district, you can apply for these certain things. Um, and then let them come back in a couple of meetings, talk about viability of being able to do that, how they would implement something like that, and then at that point, we can have this stuff, and then if it's necessary, you can do a consensus, you know, that basically tie it into policy, um, that we would do it. But I didn't think at the time, addressing it to them basically, you know, for the first time, that it was kind of fair for them to right away take a consensus on that, give them some time to digest it. I think the ideas were valid. I mean, that's why I brought them up. So it's something that, you know, is gonna take just a little bit of time, a little bit of time, I'm thinking like, you know, a month or so, you know, before we can kind of establish that into some sort of policy.
Does planning and zoning have any influence on the TIF, or is that strictly economic development? Is it separate there? I mean, and that's sort of my question, is we have now seven TIFs. Who's, who's actually responsible for that TIF?
That too is one of my suggestions, that it should kind of fall under the purview of economic development.
Yeah, it's definitely not planning.
Yeah, planning, planning and zoning gets involved when projects start going. The money part of it would be community development.
Yeah, it's under economic development. However, planning and zoning will have say once they develop anything, because they, they step in for all those development questions at the development stage. So um, it, all the committees are working in, in tandem to get a place developed, but initially it'll go through economic development.
Do we have a trustee liaison for planning and zoning now or not?
Yes, it's me.
Sure.
Yeah. Not a trustee.
As far as the, the question, um, in the discussion I had, at least with the community development director, there is a plan to update every six months, um, uh, the, the data. The data only comes once a year though, but they will have somewhat, some numbers that they can use to update that data, because obviously Villa Park sends it over and it comes back to us from the village. So the most accurate data will be out once a year, and then every six months, they will give us an update on the, on the TIFs, and that's the plan henceforth, um, after the discussion, a trustee Kozar had in the last meeting. Um, so it, it is not difficult, because they do have to send these numbers out. It's just something that has to get into process.
Does, did the board get it, give it up? Some of the newborn members may need the information of what exactly is TIF eligible? So that could be kind of confusing. You get here.
Okay, um.
I'm on parole though.
Uh, honestly, we're gonna have a COW on TIF, TIF eligible. We're gonna have that discussion in a couple of months. It's already been brought up in the last meeting, so that people understand what is uh, TIF eligible.
That's true.
And not, uh, just to clarify and also get it all on the page, so that businesses have the ability to apply for what programs that we have out there in a uniform manner.
And so the people of the village can understand how the TIF is funded too. Uh, there's a lot of confusion on where the, that, where that money's coming from and how we can say, okay.
Yeah, I, I think a, a clear explanation of the EAV process is necessary. I agree in, and um, that can be part of that meeting, um, so that the people understand if there's no money to spend, there's no money to spend. You have to have a high enough EAV and start collecting money in the TIF funds in order to spend the money in the TIF funds.
During, when they had.
Clarify what EAV means.
To equalize assess valuation.
Assess valuation.
Just so, the way, the way the TIF works, you get, when you get your tax bill, your house is valued at a hundred thousand dollars, and that's what based on what the, what the, the assessor calls it. The next year, your house may be worth a hundred and ten thousand dollars, so now your tax bill goes up that increment. The money that was based on the hundred thousand dollar value goes to the taxing bodies. The difference between that hundred thousand and what it's at this year is eight hundred and ten thousand, that money goes into the TIF. The next year, your house is worth a hundred and twenty thousand, your taxes go up by that. The hundred thousand value goes to the taxing bodies, the twenty thousand dollar portion goes to the TIF, and it just keeps going. So the idea is, by the end of the twenty-three years, your property values hopefully have gone up, the money has gone into the TIF, and that's been developed, used to develop the, whatever properties are in that TIF. So it's not like your tax dollars are going up. It's going up, your tax bill may go up, but it's not going up by an extra amount to go into the TIF. It's just taking a portion of that and diverting it. So it's more of the taxing bodies that are getting less money. They're getting the same amount every year until the end, but the, their goal is, at the end of that twenty-three years, now they're gonna get this influx of money and, you know, at that point.
Is, is that village or county?
Well, it's the village, but it's, but the taxing body is the township.
In a six block uh, square, uh, if more than two or three houses sell, they're now revalued, reassessing you.
Yeah.
I paid four hundred dollars more last year, and now this year, the house next to be sold, and now they want four point seven percent more. So are we gonna get reassessed every year? I went right to DuPage County, and they all look at each other like, did you just say that?
Well, yeah, that's the assessment. We have nothing to do with the assessment. Yeah, that's the town, the assessor, the county assessor, the township county.
It's, it's.
You thought that's your township, right?
County is what's.
Right.
It's your township. It's your township. It's not the county.
Yeah.
Well, two separate, two separate elements.
Yeah.
So, I think to be answering my other question about funding uh, development in a TIF, if there's no money there, or is there, if somebody comes with a five hundred thousand dollar project, and are we setting up like, we're, we'll donate a percentage? Or how do you figure out how much money you're gonna participate with?
Yeah, that's kind of what we discussed on Monday, and, and, you know, like we had said, uh, probably we have a COW on there, exactly what's gonna be eligible and how much we give. I think the maximum will be fifty fifty. But if somebody comes in with, you know, a five million dollar project, you know, we, there's, we may not be able to give them two point five million dollars, because it's just not there. But we, but we may work it some other way, you know, work an incentive program.
But like, then all needs to be worked out.
Right, and then our, you know, the RDA would, would call that all out.
So the staff knows going in, you know, what our skin is in the game.
Right.
So the general concept that I'd like to see is there's basically two ways to fund a project. One would be these prepackaged ideas, where like President Consol said, you know, we'll, we'll match fifty fifty up to a certain amount. And they're all prepackaged, they're out there, you can see exactly what it is. And then, in your example, if you have a bigger project or something unique, they can come into the village with an RDA and say, if you can do this, we will do this. And then it's on a case by case basis. And then anything over twenty thousand, or whatever the spending limit is for the village, would have to flow through the board to review that, and ultimately get the blessing of the board to kind of go outside of the prepackaged box of TIF eligible type stuff.
So you also have to take a look at what the sales tax revenue you may get from that improvement.
Yeah, right, right. And those were two of the things that I wanted to see, some matching grants and things like that for businesses that bring in places for eating tax and sales tax, because you give here, but you get over here, so there's a balance there. And those are things that we want to have staff work out in the next month or so.
But those ultimate decisions will come from the board, if you mind me saying.
Via, via economic development, that can kind of vet it first, like any other commission, you know, and look at it and have some background and try to, you know, do some of the homework for us, and then come back to the board.
Last thing on financing, do we know where all the weed, last time that I saw you, whatever I asked, do we have a, an evaluation of where all the weed money went?
I was just gonna ask.
It's one of those giant questions, hey, you know, we're all.
That was supposed to solve all our problems.
Oh, man.
Let me see, I'll give, oh, there's none there. It's all.
Yeah.
Trust me, there's lots there. Just because you.
Did you spend all your weed money?
Yeah, go into his car, go into his car. His car smells kind of funny, uh. Yeah, it, it's how it was set up, you know, one third of that money goes into um, uh, police pension, one third, one third of it goes into fire pension, and the other third goes to uh, the rec, park center, parks and rec.
Okay, and again, I brought it up whatever, four months ago, so therefore now the state of Illinois manages the police and the fire pension, so we're still giving that money, putting that money into the state of Illinois?
It's not, yeah, it's overseen. I checked with Chuck, and it's overseen by the state, but it's not like the state has the, the funding.
But again, I only mentioned it because there is no, we, the last time that we did a assessment of that money, an audit of that money, is sitting there like six years. So either the money's going in, or the money's not going in, it doesn't really matter what's going on. It's like, you gotta tell us where it's going.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, well, Al's, Al's on police commission.
Double secret probation, you know?
The weed money, the weed money's in the stack right here, and the gambling money is in the stack right here.
You gotta bring Neiman back, because he was in a drawer where you can open and pull some money out.
Yeah. Yeah, well, the.
This is how like gambling money.
Until the prostitution gets in there, then you're gonna see rates go really.
So, so what was your question?
Where's, yeah, where's, yeah.
Al should like.
Well, yeah, when, when.
Where's the weed money?
I think along, along the same lines as what we're talking about with TIF, we should probably do the same thing, where at, twice a year, we just get a report on our weed revenue and our gambling revenue.
Well, once a year would be great, because it's not in the, uh, the financial audit. It's not in there.
Trustee Coomer's had her hand up for us.
Yeah, I, I guess I can just shout out, uh, whatever, uh, whatever happened. I feel like it's important to have a line item in our financials, and that will help this, this problem. So let's just put a line item in our financials.
It shouldn't, it's in there.
I think it is there, it's just not clearly marked.
Yeah, it's in there. Right, it is in there.
Yeah, it is there. It's kind of not clearly marked. I think we need to mark it as a line item clearly in some way.
Yeah, oh, it is marked. It is marked as a line item.
So a third of the money, so therefore you got a line item where it's coming in.
Right.
So where is it going out?
It's not going out. It hasn't been spent. It's sitting there.
Well, no, it's, it goes in. It, it, every year when it goes.
So you're saying a third of it goes to the fire, a third goes to the police, and a third is goes to wherever it is.
Yeah, as a line item.
Where's two hundred one percent go?
I don't care. I'm just trying to find thirty three percent.
No, I mean, it's held on that line item, right? Whatever like, if it's going into fire, it's going into fire. If it's going into pension, it's going into pension. So it's held there.
Yeah.
Based on current practices, are you having debit on the left or a credit on the right? No, credit on the left, debit on the right.
And loss is in parentheses. That's why we have law bar.
You know what, I, I can, if, we'll see about getting exactly how that transfer's made, because it should be going, we get the weed money in, a third of it goes into the police pension, and then when we make the payment to the police pension, you know, it's, it's whatever we have, and then that's added to it, and then it goes to the police pensions.
Just, just curious.
Yeah, but it's, it's, it's a line, I mean, it's in the budget. It's showing what, how much is going in there.
And I believe the police, the fire pension money now goes to the state, because all the fire departments were put in one pension fund, and they administer the investment of the money, the bigger batch from all the other, other towns and villages, and, but our section is in there.
Yeah, but we don't pay, we don't make a check out to the state of Illinois. We make it out to the fund, correct? Yeah, it's not, it's, the state oversees it, but it's not like, we, we say, here's a check to Illinois, the state of Illinois.
It's not going to the Illinois Younger Fund. It's going to.
It goes, going directly into the pension.
Yeah, probably you got one.
The individual, there's certain.
You're not bringing it back, man.
Remember that one?
Yeah.
And here's that grant.
All right, hang on, Al's talking.
And all rural communities that put their money into that fund. There's representatives who actually, from the local communities who latch over it. So I don't think we have somebody that's in that park, because there's about four or five people that, that really administer that joint fund.
Yeah.
Gotta make that.
All the money from the Illinois Lottery goes to schools.
Yeah, right, it does, yeah.
So I'd like to make a transition to.
No, it doesn't actually. It does not. It does not.
It does not.
It does, it does not. All the money does not go, a proportion does, but not all the money goes to the village.
It's yours all.
It used to go.
All right, hang on, Steve, Steve wants to say something.
I just wanted to make a transition from all this discussion about weed back to trees. That, that, that is what he's brought up about the, about the cicadas, because our village tree planting program is gonna kick in, and I'm wondering if, if the, if the department that does tree planting has a plan also to hold off on replanting trees until after the brooms hatch and around there, and then put the trees in the ground. Because you don't wanna spend money, buy trees, and then have them be attacked by all these cicadas that are gonna be around us.
Well, I can see, because I mean, they won't come out till like May or June, and at that point, the, the planting season is kind of over for the spring. So we'd have to wait till fall, but I'll, I'll check and see if, if they have any kind of plan like that.
There is a recommendation that the arboretum has, is if you're gonna find a tree, wait till fall.
Yeah.
A young tree.
Yeah. Vicky's.
Vicky, last camp, I live at four twenty-one South Oakland. Prior lived, died, grew up on five five one North Iowa. So going back to the outdated website, so question having, going back to, your street was done, love it. I go down there all the time. Um, so streets, the street project has not been updated literally since twenty-one. So I grew up in Iowa, my mother still lives in Iowa. When is that street gonna be done? Because it's, what the, I live down there all the time, can't do anything. I mean, to be honest, we're trying, we're waiting because to do my mother's driveway until the street's done. And I mean, to be honest, my mother uses a walker, her driveway is bad, street's really bad. Trying to get the township car to come onto the driveway, especially during, you know, winter, it's been challenging. Um, so, you know, I mean, it keeps getting pushed and pushed and pushed and pushed. It keeps saying next year, next year, next year. And we got split, um, you know, Wisconsin project and so forth and so on. So it's like, you know, we were slated to be in twelve, thirteen, fifteen, seventeen, now we're in twenty-four.
Are there any schools on your street?
No.
Are there any village officials that live on your street?
Well, there we go. Uh, the Iowa community said.
Can you, can you, can you go back to jail?
No, I'm not. So, yeah, so I mean, it's just, it's, it's frustrating, because it can, and I even asked the engineer, I asked Mike, I was like, when is this street gonna be done? I don't know. And this has not been updated. I mean, twenty-two is the last thing. It still says TIF and everything after twenty-one.
Mitch, I thought that that had been updated, because I had talked to the village manager about that, but if it's not, yeah, we'll, we'll see about getting that updated.
I miss Keeter's podcast, you know? I miss Keeter's podcast.
How are we on my?
Well, on 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 our roads, we borrowed twenty three million dollars for the road research. It's a seventy year project.
We supposed to have enough money to do all the like everything.
Yeah. Yeah, but.
Honestly, um the road project is come to be one of the strategic plans that we have going forth. Um I think that's one of the main things.
It's been a strategic plan for years.
No, no, I understand finishing it. It's it's since two, I I understand two thousand fourteen to I also hate my road and Wisconsin.
No, I mean, it's been.
Just recently in twenty three years hasn't been done. I've been looking into that a lot. And Iowa definitely is next, pretty close to next on the list as far as I can see. So I understand, but since two thousand fourteen, the goal is to finish that within the next two to the three years. That's.
You know what? My mother's gonna be ninety four. You think it'd be done before? I'm just asking. I mean, she's lived there since nineteen fifty nine. Her street has been done once since she's lived there.
I I.
She was there and then once since then. Just saying.
I I agree and um that whole whole area needs to be done. I agree. Yeah, it the whole area is not just that street, so I I am not disagreeing with you on that.
It does. It's frustrating.
Um that is on the plan to get done pretty much next. I understand she's ninety four. I have a, you know, the.
I'm just saying, but I mean, we've been doing this. It's been on it's been it's been next for ten years plus.
Well, it'll be uh it'll be addressed.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, I've been like, I've been asking every year almost every year we go, it's it's next. It's next. It's next. No, it's not next. And then my favorite was. It was supposed to be done, then it got split. Then Wisconsin got done. And I have to say, I mean, it sounds terrible, but you know, I live in Oakland. When our street got done, I can tell you right now, the middle of our street, I hope your street doesn't tell this, the middle of our street, it floods every single time. All of it goes straight down into our neighbors. Like, you can't get through. I mean, there's like a foot and a half. My sister, her house was on um when Westmore got done, before she sold her house on Westmore and James. They redid her street. Her whole entire front yard was flooded after they redid her street still. She has a drain in front of her yard. She called the village like, oh, we'll look into it. It's still flooded and even before she sold her house. So I'm just saying, want it done right, you know, besides the fact. Um so. Just be careful as we do this, but you know what? It's like make sure we're doing it right as well. I mean, that's another. Issue that I think we have as well, but it's always next. Next can't always be next. So happy that it's.
See that cam? Wait till next year.
Uh yeah, next year. It'll be next year.
It's like Combs' best. Wait till next year.
Next year, exactly. I don't think I have a next year. I'm like, you know, so.
Okay, okay, anyone else?
Is the tri something on schedule? Not like they fix their street.
It's supposed to be and they were supposed to finish up this spring.
So it's supposed to be finished this spring?
Yeah, I know, because I think it's just they they got some asphalt thing to do and they're just waiting for the plants to open.
Where where did that money come from?
Some of it was grant money, some of it was general funds.
I mean, what was the point of this? I I live by, I'm not a race. I live very good.
Yeah. Basically to connect all three trails, the Great Western, the Prairie Path and the.
Wildwood Avenue, which is.
I'm sorry.
I mean, there's Wildwood Avenue, which is not a busy street. And Villa at Porterville is not really busy.
Yeah.
It's just a kind of redundant to me. You have streets that.
Yeah, that was that was part of, I think, pedestrian, the bike and pedestrian subcommittee and public works.
When I asked Director Carrera about that, because I also live on Monterey, um just north of Bolton. Um he said that they will start, uh usually the target date is to start May first. That's technically spring. So that's the target date to start.
But hopefully before that with the weather we've been having, they may open early.
Well, I just wondered because you're coordinating the rec center, you're coordinating the the I think in traffic and safety right now about Villa trying to get a safe crossing.
Yeah.
Plan set up for that and then the bike trail opening up.
Yeah.
You know, when they were gonna coordinate that all to make sure when it does open.
Sure. No, I've heard it because I have neighbors across the street who don't have sidewalks right now and haven't since they've moved themselves.
Oh, Elm Street. You ever go on Elm Street?
The road project can be finished before they.
Elm Street has never had curbs. Go on Hardmore, hang the left down and it goes all the way to Lombard and then in Lombard, all of a sudden they have curbs. We have never had curbs. The last time anything was done at that street because there's open uh, you know. Ditch, ditch, ditch. Yeah, just a ditch up and down and some people have gravel, some people have grass, but that hasn't been touched since nineteen fifty two.
Pretty smooth though.
Yeah, if you if you try to.
You're gonna be uh talking to pumpkins real soon here. It's already nine fifty four. I know you want to go make sure to do that. Whatever happened about the couple that was sitting here about the money that they were gonna get? You were gonna follow up on that?
They're they're getting theirs back.
They got it already.
Yeah.
They're getting it?
They got their check and they're done and they're happy.
Fantastic. That was.
And we changed our ordinance as a result.
Excellent. Thank you.
How about a one minute recap on the railroad property? What I I mean, I know we alluded to it earlier in the meeting. What is happening with that parcel? How much time are we gonna give that developer to?
Uh, not much more. Yeah, but there's, again, it's a private concern there, so there's not much we can do to force his hand. Um but we're we're going to try. Uh, there's not a lot I can say right now. So there's still something we're still discussing with him, but um.
That property's been thorn in our side for sixteen years.
Oh, yeah, ever since two thousand eight, yeah, yeah.
Oh, Golden Spike L L C, yeah.
But it um.
Underwritten by what?
It's not gonna get done by summer, but um but hopefully there'll be a resolution of it soon. That was a thirty second recap. Sorry, I can't. It can't go into all of it. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, anyone else?
Four minutes, they'll beam signing.
Yeah, there you go. Okay. Okay, well, thanks everybody for coming. Um we'll try to look into all of these issues and we'll see what we can come up with at the next. Or I'll I'll try to email a lot of certain people on that. So we'll close at uh nine fifty six. Thank you. Thanks for coming out. Hey, Joe. No, because it's because this is.
Gimme Paul. Hey, Jack.
So uh about the science.
Okay. Um, once we receive a report of a political flaw, we coordinate with U P and Metro. And we put the chains on there, but it was through Metro.
Okay. Hi.
Uh, we made the change of order, two piece building and they're supposed to repair that door.
Okay, I'll go take them down.
Yeah, but that's what uh what they had.
I just put them up this morning, so it's not a big deal. I don't think they'll even get a a request for information.
Yeah.
All right, I'll see you over there. Okay, sounds good, Joe. Thanks. It's on your pay no mind list, isn't it? Thank you.
You're welcome. I'll take care of that.
Yeah, February sixteenth. She got buried. I'm just seeing it now. It just got murdered.